It is 7 o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all the pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. Declaration of a quorum, we have six members present. Mr. Nugent will be with us in a few minutes. Moving to item C, recognitions. Mr. Martindale.
Mr. Schaefer, board members. Something that we have not been able to do since February, while we've had virtual meetings as well as some in-person, we have not had any principal or student guest since that time. So it is with great pleasure that I introduce two of our elementary principals who will introduce their students. They're going to lead us in our pledge in our moment of silence tonight. Ms. Ally Deluna from Southwood Valley, Ms. Robin Jones from Riverbend Elementary. Ladies?
We're really excited to be the first. Glad to be back and seeing your faces. So tonight I have with me Jacob and Jordan Souls, and I'm going to let them actually introduce themselves to you tonight. Come on up, guys.
Hi, my name is Jordan. Hi, my name is Jordan. I'm eight years old. I am in third grade dual language, and I love to dance and play piano. I love going to Southwood Valley because all the kids are well behaved, the school's very clean, and I love all the teachers that work there.
Hi, my name is Jacob. I am 10 years old, and I'm in fourth grade dual language at Southwood Valley. I like Southwood Valley because of all the awesome teachers from kinder all the way up to fourth grade.
And good evening from Riverbend and the Riverbend Bears. We have two bears here to introduce themselves as well.
I'm in fourth grade. Everything I like about Riverbend, the teachers are nice, I like seeing friends, and I like learning about what national day it is. Like, today is National Cheese Toast Day.
Hi, my name is Gianni, and I like Riverbend is because the teachers are nice and because I like when we did the scientists, I mean, the penny, pennies with the foil.
Please stand for the pledges in the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God and one indivisible.
Please join us for the moment of silence.
Thank you.
Nice, awesome. Here, you may hold your card for me. You may hold your card for me. You'll go stand up there for the school board members.
I love doing that thing where you do the foil and you see how many pennies you can, right? Do you fit in it right? Close. I love that.
This is perfect.
Let it smile.
Smile with your eyes.
Thank you, guys, so much. Thank you for coming.
I would say on behalf of the entire board, I mean, that, here's my seeing kids back here, the Southwood Valley artwork in the back. I'm not a big coffee person, but if you look at the coffee filters artwork in the back by Cypress Grove, that is very amazing. Glad to see parents here, and I was glad to see the kiddos. We will move to item D, consent agenda items. The items under consent would be G, H3, H4, H5, J2, J3, J4, J5, J6, J7. Those are the items we have on the consent agenda. Is there anybody that would like one of those items pulled? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
I'm motioning to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Horak, second by Ms. Green. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. That will bring us up to E1. Are there any board directions, reports, announcements for many of the boards and the committees?
Mr. Nugent and I both attended the Education Foundation kickoff meeting, I guess is what it was. Mike wanted me to pass along, obviously, that we are extremely grateful for our teachers and students and our staff that have joined us in coming back to work and trying to find some normalcy to the world and getting back to it. As an Education Foundation board member as well, from my standpoint, it's neat to see what we're going to hopefully be able to do this year as Education Foundation. But these teachers and staff who continue to support the Education Foundation through their giving campaign that we host, and 51% of the staff in College Station ISD have pledged $142,220 this year. So that's helping within, and we're going to put that back in scholarships and grants and give those out this year. He also said, "We also hope to be able to continue all of our programs at the same or very close level compared to last year." If anybody's watching this, I think a big concern is, is 50 men who can cook going to continue in the same realm, I guess, that it has in years past? And all I'm going to say as a board member on that is, we are doing everything we can to make it continue in the same aspect. At the same time, we are also preparing in case we have to make any adjustments. So in some shape or form, an event will be held, hopefully. We don't know what that looks like right now, but if we could say, yes, it's going to look like it has in years past, that's what we'll stand by right now and just hope the cards fall where they may. So other than that, we're ready to roll education foundation-wise, and I think grants are due here October 1st. I don't know for sure. So if teachers have any grants or anything like that that they want to apply for, make sure we get those in. So that's about it.
Mr. Horak and myself attended DEIC's kickoff meeting last week, which was great to see everyone there, parents, administrators, teachers. And this meeting, the purpose was to vote in the officers for this year. So that's all I have to report.
I just have a real quick update that we were able to have the Head Start Policy Council's first meeting of the year as well last week, and not in person, it was on Zoom, which is always a little disappointing. I love going to those meetings and seeing all the parents and staff that work with those, the littles. But they're moving ahead, just like all the rest of our teachers are, right? Similar kind of percentages of in-person versus virtual, so making a lot of the same types of adaptations. And I guess the biggest update, most of the updates we'll get a little bit later when Ms. Heath gives us an update on the self-assessment that we went over and approved. So we'll all see that in a little bit.
The Personnel Advisory Committee were able to actually meet together for the first time since March, and it was a great meeting. They also chose new officers. Rocco Grande from Oakwood, I believe, was elected as the president, and Allison Gilmore from Cypress Grove as the secretary. It was a fairly short meeting, but a couple of items were discussed. The continuing possibility of some type of pre-K program for the children of employees of the district is something that's being looked into. And then Mr. Martindale got to answer lots of good questions about some of the virtual teaching issues that have come up as far as scheduling and so forth. But other than that, it was a great first meeting to get back together for the first time since March.
I have seen Mr. Martindale enjoy those meetings and think it's helped his professional development rather significantly. The intergovernmental relations meeting is this coming week, and so we will bring that information. It will be the first one for this school year. If there's no other board announcements, we will go to the superintendent for his update.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Provided everyone a handout with the slides for the superintendent's update, I decided to go with a handout packet this time as opposed to doing a PowerPoint presentation. Going to start with the technology update and just reference the laptops and the numbers that you see there in the table. We have distributed 559 laptops to date to our virtual learners. New devices that have been ordered that we have yet to receive, 410. We've received 112 that are pending distribution. We're configuring those laptops to go to campuses. As of date, new devices that have been distributed back out to campuses, 472, for a total of 994 devices. Now, the asterisk that you see next to the 410 in reference to the bottom, there is an agenda item this evening for the board to consider, and that's the purchase of an additional 501 laptops. So that's not included in the grand totals you see above. So that's what we're tracking with technology currently. Second page. Instructional model selection, you're familiar with these numbers. This was as of the first day of school, August the 18th. We had 32.1% of our students receiving virtual instruction or selecting the virtual instructional model, and 67.9 onsite. At the close of each grading cycle, students provide the opportunity to move or shift instructional modes if they so choose. For our secondary students, that's at the six weeks point, which is coming up here next week. At the elementary, it'll be at the nine-week point. So the numbers you see below that, instructional model selection beginning September 28th, so that'll be the beginning of the second six weeks, and this number's influenced by survey results and the number of secondary students choosing to return to onsite instruction from virtual. So our overall numbers beginning on September 28th, after the adjustment at the secondary level, will have us at 27% virtual as opposed to 32.1, and we'll have an increase of onsite percentage of students receiving onsite instruction from 67.9 to 73%. And again, that's the influence of the secondary students, five through 12, making an adjustment at grading cycle. So elementary will go through the same process at the nine-week period. So you will see these percentages move again at that point in time. Next page, just showing you what that looks like by campus. So the first one, the high school, again, we'll look at August 18th, percent onsite at Kinsol was 69%, beginning the second six weeks, 928. We're projecting them to be at 73.6% onsite. For CSHS, they started the year with 71.7% onsite, and beginning the second six weeks, we're projecting 73.5% onsite. College View started the year at 73.6, and beginning the second six weeks will be 82.7. So you see the overall percentages when we started school at the high school level, we had 70.5% of our students onsite, and that's shifting to 73.7 beginning the second six weeks. I provided you the same information at the middle school level, so you can see the movement at each of the middle schools as far as percentage onsite and virtual from the first day of school to projections for second six weeks. When we started the first day, we had 69.4% of our students onsite. When we look to the second six weeks at the middle school level, overall, we're anticipating that number to increase to 76.5%. I do want to go back and touch on this, the asterisk also, and it says approved additional positions. One of the, and Mr. Van referenced it, the biggest thing right now is the workload for our teachers that are supporting onsite as well as virtual components, both. So I've been meeting with the secondary principals over the course of the last three weeks, since the second week of school, on a weekly basis to try to just kind of look and see what we have going on. So I've approved personnel, different number of personnel at each of those campuses that are denoted there, to try to provide them some relief with some of those loads. Now, that takes a little bit of time because you have to go through the interviewing, hiring process, so some of those positions will start kind of transitioning in as we move to the second six weeks. So when you couple that with more kids moving onsite, what we're hoping for is to relieve some of that stress on those teachers that have those split assignments or significant virtual load, just try to relieve some of that pressure they're feeling because it's a tremendous amount of work. I'll begin meeting with the elementary principals next week. While they have some split, a majority of their positions are what I consider pure, so they're strictly onsite or they're doing strictly virtual. So the concern has been with the workload, where everybody's working as hard as they can, but I do think the pressure point we have to be cognizant of are those teachers that are carrying both models. So the addition of some positions on that, that's why I marked that to show y'all that we're having those conversations. Next page, we'll show you the intermediate, that's 5-6. We started the year, the first day of school, intermediate percent onsite was 67.8, and for the second six weeks, that number is shifting to 80%. So kind of you can see 5-6, kind of more movement, 7-8, a little bit less, and in the high school, less. So it'd be interesting to see what we get from our elementaries in the next three weeks. Also included some data for you as far as confirmed cases. This is our employees, and as of current, right now, the end of last week, we have three active positive cases. So through the end of last week, we had had 10 totals since the beginning of school. Seven of those have recovered through the course of that time, and we have three active right now. Next page is students since the return of school. We had no cases the first several weeks. Currently, at the end of last week, we had 12 total cases, 10 are active and two are recovered. So that gives you an idea of our cases. A reminder, we have probably not quite 10,000 students on our campuses, maybe right about 10,000, a little bit less, and 2,000 employees. So if you want to add those number of cases together, then consider the fact that we've got about 12,000-plus people moving through our facilities a day, then you can do the math on that. Folks are working hard and doing an excellent job with that. They're wearing their masks, they're being cognizant of the decisions they're making, and I can't speak to the effort of our students and our faculty and staff. Next item I wanted to mention, we are signing up folks to participate in Leadership CSISD. As you can see on the last slide, those are the dates, the topics, and locations for this year's Leadership CSISD. We'll close out taking those applications the 1st of October, the end of this month. And the last item I wanted to communicate, as we decided to workshop, our transportation oversight meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 26th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and the site is pending. So, Mr. Schaefer, that sums up my update for this month.
Quick question on, when we look at the number of students transitioning from, you know, virtual to on-campus, obviously, we're seeing that more and more students are coming on campus. Are you seeing, again, I realize that the number is positive, there's more coming, are you seeing anything that concerns you about students that are opting to go to the virtual option? Or is it just mainly an increase?
Those that are opting to the virtual, no. I will tell you something that I know our folks are wrestling with is, there are some students that selected virtual in the beginning, and the schools and the principals or teachers are really making an effort to reach some of those folks that aren't engaging as much, probably as if they were onsite. So that is a piece that we're all experiencing is, obviously, when they're working from a virtual standpoint, responsibility becomes more on them as far as their schedule and the discipline and commitment to engage and take care of their assignments. And so those folks are making a tremendous effort to reach out to those students that are probably not tending to business in as timely a fashion as they should be.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. So I get quite a few questions from parents asking if there's anything, from the virtual parents, asking if there's anything that they can be doing to help. And, Mr. Martindale, my advice to them has just been to continue to try to stay positive, and when they do have come across something, to message the teacher through school, is you either have the student do it or the parent do it. I mean, is this still, do you have any other advice for?
Yeah, I think on that one, Ms. Martindale, I think the biggest thing that a lot of folks are learning as we're beginning is that, again, a number of our folks are handling onsite classes, and then they have a virtual period here or there, or a couple of virtual periods. And so those teachers, when they're messaged or there's an email for them, they may very well be teaching an in-person class. So I think the patience just allows them to respond, understanding that their responsibilities may not be solely the virtual instruction piece. So I think just patience on that is what I would ask or advise. And again, as we transition to the second six weeks, the conversation in principles, I know they were looking at as well. And as they consider a position ad that we've provided and those numbers shift, I know one of the priorities is to, if there's a way to reduce as many as those split responsibility positions as possible. It's a matter of numbers and math. They might be able to accomplish it in some scenarios where a teacher that maybe had two sections of virtual and four of onsite might be able to go strictly onsite, and so that eliminates the virtual piece. Or if they've been able to eliminate a few virtual sections and they can take a teacher that then is just purely virtual. So as they transition this at the second six weeks, a lot of the conversation and things they're looking at is, if there's an opportunity to make those a more pure assignment, then that's always a priority. Where it becomes really challenging, though, to accomplish that's at the high school level because you have so many unique specialized classes, then in some areas, it becomes almost impossible because you may have one or two people teaching, you know, a particular course. So, but that's something we recognize because folks are working hard, and I think the more we can move toward that, then hopefully that relieves some of the added workload that folks have experienced since the beginning of school.
Okay, yeah, I've explained to some parents that one of the things we pride ourselves on here in this district is choice, you know, for all of our students, and right now, that seems to be making things slightly more difficult because our kids have so many choices.
Yeah, and this is for way down the road, and I know it's superintendent update, and if I don't stop, we'll be here all night. But the, and something, you know, that I've mentioned to several principals is, as we've started the year and as we have these transitions of numbers, then if we can look to, you know, how can we manage those workloads if it creates an opportunity for adjustment? And I know they're very attuned to that because they're with their teachers every day. But I wonder future from, you know, looking at even next year. I don't know that, I wonder if virtual is not going to become an expectation or commonplace for public education. Now, choosing to do that or not, I don't know. I think to be competitive and prepare for the future, you're going to have to consider it. Now, with that being said, it can absolutely not look like what it looks like now because that's not the ideal model, because we have two weeks to react because of scheduling and some of the guidelines put in place for us. But long-term, you know, that's probably a question we need to start contemplating as to what would that look like if we got to develop it ourselves over the course of time and it becomes a part of what we are in a much more effective and efficient manner and housed possibly in one building. So I think that's visioning off, but just something to consider over the course of this year, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I agree. I think this is something that's going to be sticking with us for some time. We will move to item F, hearing of citizens. There's somebody. Oh, hearing of citizens. So we will move to item H1, receive report on CSISD professional development. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. And board members, of course, each month during a regular school year, we have a program update. We have those on, in essence, a three-year cycle. Tonight, our program update has to do with professional development, and Mr. Mann, our Director of Instruction and Leadership Development, is here to provide us that program update. Mr. Mann?
Good evening, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Martindale, board of trustees. It is my pleasure to come to you this evening to give you the three-year update on professional development in CSISD. So the items I'm going to cover with you tonight, you can see here in front of you, we're going to talk about the program, the vision, foundation. I'm going to mention what TEA requires of Texas educators, how we budget to support PD in CSISD, then we're going to jump into the major goals and activities that we cover, touch on some of the performance data that we gather, and then we'll close with challenges and needs and growths of the program. So as you can see here, it is our vision that our employees maintain a high standard of professionalism and dedicate themselves to being a lifelong learner, and that's what we expect of our educators, that's what we expect of our students. And so we want to be a learning organization, and so we do that by modeling that with our adults. Our programs are built on research-based practices. We build those into our district and campus improvement plans, so whenever you read over those plans, you see the goals that we want to achieve in the professional
Director of Instruction and Leadership Development, is here to provide us that program update. Mr. Mann?
Good evening, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Martindale, Board of Trustees. It is my pleasure to come to you this evening to give you the three-year update on professional development and CSISD. So the items I'm going to cover with you tonight, you can see here in front of you, we're going to talk about the program, the vision, foundation. I'm going to mention what TEA requires of Texas educators, how we budget to support PD and CSISD, then we're going to jump into the major goals and activities that we cover, touch on some of the performance data that we gather, and then we'll close with challenges and needs and growths of the program. So as you can see here, it is our vision that our employees maintain a high standard of professionalism and dedicate themselves to being a lifelong learner. And that's what we expect of our educators, that's what we expect of our students. And so we want to be a learning organization, and so we do that by modeling that with our adults. Our programs are built on research-based practices. We build those into our district and campus improvement plans, so whenever you read over those plans, you see the goals that we want to achieve in the professional development, we need to achieve those goals. We try to use a variety of designs in how we put our adults together and use best practices for adults' learning whenever we put our PD sessions together. And everything that we do, we always try to maintain a focus on how this ultimately is going to improve our student outcomes because that's what we're here for. Texas Education Agency, you can see here the requirements for teachers. They have to complete at least 150 hours every five years, and so that's 30 hours annually. And so as a district, we try to provide a wide variety of PD sessions for them, just because it's sometimes difficult to get that outside of the district. And so we try to accommodate that as much as we can. And there are some specifics by TEA where teachers must get training in very, very specific areas, and so we try to provide those specific areas throughout the year as well. And then you can see for administrators, it bumps it up by 50 hours in that same five-year period. And so 40 hours annually was a lot of time, and 160 of those must come from very specific areas as well. And so we're trying to be mindful of that whenever we look at all the different ways that we offer professional development. These are the different programs, or the different funding sources, actually, that we utilize for our PD. And so I'm going to just briefly touch on what these are, not so much most of you in this room know what these are, but maybe not everyone watching will know what all of these programs are. So local funds, that's what it sounds like. Those are the funds that are allocated here within the district from the taxpayer dollars. And then we have, the rest of these come from different type of federal programs. So we have Title I, II, III, and IV listed on this page. And so Title I, those are our campuses with a higher concentration of low-income students, and there's professional development dollars associated with those programs. Title II, that touches all of our programs across the district. All of our teachers and administrators are eligible to utilize some PD under Title II. And then we have Title III, which is very specific to our English-language learners and our immigrant students, and so we provide PD that's very specific to support the growth of those kids. And then Title IV, it's a relatively new one. This is the fourth year of Title IV to be in existence, but this is to really help provide well-rounded education and safe school environments for our kids to learn in. And then we have Head Start, and you're going to hear a program update right after this about Head Start. So I won't dive into that too much, but that's definitely a program designed to help break the cycle of poverty that's targeting our youngest of learners that are coming from low-income environments. We have our Career and Technical Education Program, and so they provide PD that's very specific to their CTE programs, and the money that they utilize comes from their Perkins Grants. And then finally, we have our Special Services Programs, and of course, this program is designed to help our kids reach their fullest potential and participating in the free and appropriate public education that's in compliance with the Individuals with Disabilities Act. So these are the programs that provide the funding for all of the PD across CSISD. And so if you look at the dollars, this is last year's budget allocation, so if you look at the dollars that we allocate from the different programs across CSISD, and then in the right column, you'll see the amount of expenditures that we were able to spend last year. But keep in mind, COVID happened, and we had to curb a lot of our professional development at the end of February. And many, many things that we do, and I'll get into here in a moment, actually occur in the late spring and over in the summertime. But this is just to give you an idea of just how much money we allocate as a district toward professional development to support the growth of our teachers. The good news is, is if, I go back to this slide, about a third of the money that wasn't spent is local, two-thirds of the money that wasn't spent is federal. The great news is, is the federal programs have allowed us to have concurrent budgets. So we get to spend all of last year's money and all of this year's money, which is a good thing because we're looking for all the different ways we can capitalize on all of those federal dollars. So Dr. Ramirez and I are in conversation all the time with folks across the district on what are their needs so that we can make sure that we're capitalizing on all the different federal programs. Major activities, you can see them listed here. I won't read every one of them to you, but this gives you an idea of, these are the big events that utilize several thousands of dollars from the variety of the funding sources that I just went over. And we really evaluate these every year. We talk with our principals, we talk with our directors, and we do needs assessments to ask, what are your needs? How can we pull in information or pull in the training that you need to get you the training and resources available to you? And this just continues on, and these are more of at a district level, the Understanding by Design, that is the work we've been doing over the last couple of years to help grow our knowledge of curriculum and redesign and working with our teachers. And this year, it's very exciting with our new CTE director. He has actually a three-year plan that he's developed that he is working with teachers and administrators and counselors over that PD component, and he is super excited whenever you get to meet Kevin, if you haven't met him yet. His energy is very, very enthusiastic, and it's very catchy. It's a very contagious energy he has. But you can see the variety of programs that we offer throughout the district utilizing all the different dollars that we have. We utilize our data very much whenever we're trying to evaluate the effectiveness of our professional development. And so what I tried to capture here was just to give you an idea of the volume that we provide on an annual basis. And you can see, we've tried to ramp it up each year, and last year, whenever we were out for COVID for those about 10-week period, we still were able to offer 73 sessions in a virtual environment. And of course, all of those were geared toward helping teachers be virtual teachers through that time. But we really try to keep our PD going throughout the year as much as we can. This shows how much we do over the summer. You can certainly see the amount of work that was performed in 2018. That's whenever we had a really large push with Schoology, as well as our curriculum redesigned. And so we had lots of professional development being taken advantage of during that summer. And then this past summer, the 177, COVID definitely reduced the amount of things that we could offer, and I would say that probably 165 of those 177 were through a virtual setting. And so it was a new environment for all of us in learning how to push those out there and engage our people in that environment. And I really want to commend the people that led it, as well as the people that attended it, just because it's just a new environment to do those things. But I was really proud of the CNI department and all of the campus CTFs that helped provide all that PD this summer. Also looking at the data, this is just an example of how we use the data to try to make adjustments to what we're doing in our professional development. So with NTU, you can see the three-year growth in our satisfaction rating, and that's because we had the sessions, we talked with our attendees, we took their feedback, we took their suggestions, we made adjustments, and then we saw some improvement the next year. We did the same thing, we saw some improvement the next year. And so this is just part of that continual improvement cycle that we try to utilize to help us make sure that we're meeting the needs of our teachers and what they'd like to see. This data comes from our Teacher Leadership Academy, and so I know there's only 25 responses, but there's only 45 attendees. So it's a pretty decent response rate. And you can see that there's a lot of satisfaction, you know, with almost all of them coming in in fours and fives. It tells us that we're doing really good things in that program and with our teachers and growing their leadership. And this is just some anecdotal data that came from one of the surveys, and it just really talks about how the goal is to teach them how to be a leader, but not the leader that you think of, like the person standing up in the front of the room all the time, but that peer leader. And those are the things that the teachers that go through TLA really appreciate, is that it's somebody taking time to invest in them, to help them grow and develop their skills so they can lead their peers in a positive manner. This is some survey data from our results coaching training. We've talked about results coaching in the past, and that's just professional coaching training that we provide for our administrators, as well as our instructional coaches, and it's a very popular training. The ladies that come in from results coaching, they do a great job of relating with everybody and giving some good tips and just really effective coaching, practice, and training opportunities for folks to be able to apply that in their everyday work. And I'm excited about this year, we're going to be able to provide that for our high school department heads because our high schools currently do not have instructional coaches, so we're trying to level the playing field with them a little bit and get them some additional training so that whenever the department heads are working with their teachers, they'll have some background and skills on how to effectively coach their staff. So wrapping up, some of the program challenges that we see, obviously, COVID-19 is a big challenge. This year, we are limiting a lot of our PD offerings and pulling off campuses because we obviously want to keep everybody safe, and we also are trying to be mindful of sub-issues. We want to make sure that we're not causing any sub-issues with having folks over here a bunch. We're making it work. Time and space is always a struggle. I mean, we knew back whenever we added on this half of the central office building, these rooms were desperately needed, and they're booked all the time, you know, and especially now with COVID, needing bigger spaces to accommodate smaller groups of folks, that's going to be a continual battle, but we're working through it, and that's just what we do. And then system-wide coordination, as you can see, we're spending just under $1 million on PD, so it requires a lot of coordination across the district. And so that's always going to be something that we're working on and growing and communicating better across our system to make sure that we're not stepping on each other's toes and doing what we need to do. And in our needs and growth areas, we're going to continue the development and creation of our resources for virtual instruction. Stephanie Ryan and I are working with other folks. We're putting courses into Schoology for teachers to be able to utilize and go through as self-paced module. We've also, you know, really putting a focus in on that job-embedded PD, and Mr. Martindale has graciously allowed us to post in for an integration specialist position, which is a person that's going to work with Stephanie, that's going to be able to help integrate a lot of the technology resources into the everyday work. And so that's an investment into the professional growth of our folks with hiring personnel to help with that. And then we're going to have the continued deployment and development of online and on-demand PD, just because we know that, you know, given the current situation we're in, we've got to make sure that we're keeping up with that. And it is extremely valuable to bring people together face-to-face in a room for learning, and we know that, but we also know that we have to have it available for people on their time because they're just so busy. And so we're just rethinking how we can provide our PD. And then, of course, as with anything that we do in any job, it's just balancing the needs and the time, you know, because there's never enough time, there's never enough money, you just got to figure out how to make it all work together. So with that, I'll take any questions or comments you may have.
Mr. Mann, could you talk a little bit more about the integration specialist and what their role is?
Sure. Yes, so Stephanie Ryan does a lot of this in her job, but she's one person with 19 campuses and over 1,000 teachers. And so this position is going to be working with her, and they're going to be, they're going to be helping teachers, like, say that I'm a new teacher to CSISD, and I don't really know how to utilize NearPod very well. Well, this person's going to be able to come and going to help sit with them and work with them and sit alongside and model things for them, and that's very valuable because it's one thing to just be told how to do something, it's another to have somebody there. And we have campus technology facilitators, but they're also full-time teachers. And so they may be only available for one period of the day, and so having another person that's able to help or another person that's, whenever a phone call is made to say, hey, I'm having a hard time making this work, can you help me understand? Or if there's another program that they see that they think is really valuable, then someone would be able to help sit with them and work through that with them. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Really, it's integrating the technology into the instructional practice.
Okay, but they would potentially work individually with teachers?
Oh, they absolutely will, yes. That's their ultimate goal. They love to sit right next to them and put it in and even teach with them, or, you know, do a model lesson and then help them understand how to get better.
Thank you.
Really, in essence, the role of Ms. Ryan has, as you can imagine, as virtual instruction has evolved, there's not enough of her to go around. So this has been capacity in a particular area of need for us.
Mr. Mann, I'm just trying to understand, how much of the professional development that occurs with the teachers and admin, how much of it is, do they get to direct what they want to do, and how much of it is kind of coming from the district and what we think that may be beneficial for them that year or at that time?
Yeah, I mean, we ask for, we ask, we do surveys a lot, you know, a majority of it comes from either a district improvement plan or from the campus improvement plans. Sure, there are some things like the Understanding by Design that's related to our curriculum writing that we say, we need this PD that is driven from the district side because we needed to revamp our curriculum. But, so for example, Title I campuses, they do their campus needs assessments, they tell Dr. Ramirez, these are the things that we want, and then she works hard behind the scenes to try to provide those resources. With Title II money, you know, the training of the high school department heads, that came from the principals. Actually, we started that conversation two years ago, saying, hey, wouldn't it be great to be able to do this? You know, Tiffany at CSHS said, I'd like to do that myself, is that a possibility? And then I said, well, let's work together so that we can try to make it and get it to all three high schools. And so it took a little bit longer than we would like for it to happen, but we really try to survey and get their feedback and input on what it is that they're doing. And then we also survey, especially if it's something like Teacher Leadership Academy, as it goes along, we survey the participants and adjust things as we go through based off of what their feedback is, you know? And we just conducted a success team professional development last week, and I sent out a survey to the admin team and said, what would you like to see different? What would you like to see that's better? And so we can continually tweak and adjust what we're doing to help meet their needs. So we try to do that as much as we can.
Okay, good, that helps me understand it better. It sounds like a lot of the needs are coming bottoms-up from the campuses.
Yes.
And then you're helping coordinate and get the, make it available to
Yes.
What they need.
Yeah, that's correct. All right. Thank you very much.
Excellent presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mann. Now move those to item H2, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action on the Annual Birth to Five Head Start Self-Assessment Report. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, and board members. And Ms. McAdams alluded to it earlier, but Ms. Heath, our Director of Elementary Ed, is here this evening to provide us with our birth to five Head Start Self-Assessment. And after the presentation, you will be looking for board approval, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Martindale, Mr. Schaefer, members of the board. As Mr. Martindale mentioned, this is for consideration, discussion, and approval. So as we look back at last year, 2019, 2020, it was an interesting year for all of us, especially in early education. Last year was our first year to serve 221 spots and Head Start in '70, and early Head Start. And by the end of the year, we had served 243 kids in Head Start, 91 students in aid expected mothers in early Head Start. And at the end of the year, we had 46 income-eligible kids on our Head Start waiting list that did not receive services. And that does not include the 56 kids that were income-eligible for Head Start that we served in pre-K. So that's community assessment right there. It shows that our community desperately needs these services. Our eligibility and enrollment process is kind of our first connection with families, and needless to say, we had to adapt that this year as that start, that process starts around March when COVID hit. And so we very quickly adapted to an online process, which I think was very successful given that 699 families filled out an online interest application for either Head Start, pre-K, or early Head Start. We continue to have a waiting list, as just mentioned. Our attendance is good, it's 89% in early Head Start and 87% in Head Start. Our goal is 90, it's one of our program goals. As we look forward to this next year, one of the things that we want to improve upon is getting our kids that last step into e-school, into the district software system before school starts so that they're not missing out on communication from campuses, from districts, and from teachers. Family engagement has always been a strength of our program. Typically, we have more than 80% of our families participate in some form of engagement during the year. This past year, due to COVID, we had 71%, and that was a lot because of our end-of-year events did not happen. We missed soccer, we missed Family Fun and Field Day, we missed early Head Start Spring Fling. So we were down to 71% with that. However, even with the shutdown, we continue to support families, and 20% more families completed a goal during the school year. That's a total of 210 families. As we move into this year, one of the things that we want to improve upon is how do we keep family engagement when we're limiting families on campus? What's that going to look like? How do we keep them participating in their child's learning? How do we keep them participating in their child's learning? The second piece of that is how do we provide more mental health support for families that we know are struggling? And we've been able, with quality improvement funds, to establish a collaborative with Oakwood Roots Counseling in the community. And we have someone providing weekly or monthly services to our families in both English and Spanish. Health and safety. We're committed to healthy children, healthy families. We know healthy kids learn better. This year, we had 83% of kids get some sort of well check and 79% get a dental exam. More importantly, those gaps, those catches that we make in early education, 40, or yeah, 46 referrals for vision screenings, most of those ending up in some sort of glasses or adaption, and then 10 hearing referrals, several of those ending up with tubes. And we know that that plants a good foundation for Kinder First Second and so on. We want 100%. That's what we want. We want all kids to access well child checks, you know, vision screenings, hearing screenings. And we're working through a plan right now and what that's going to look like for our virtual students. Education and child outcomes. This past year, we served 38 students in Head Start with an IEP, and that's 17% of the program, and five students in early Head Start with an IFSP. Those are those individual service plans. We also, as Mr. Mann talked about professional development, we took advantage of the shutdown time, and our teachers went through 26 hours of professional development through the Children's Learning Institute virtually. As we move forward, you know, our kids have been gone for six months, and they're back. And so providing those mental health supports for teachers and students in the classroom, dealing with behavioral issues, is a big focus, along with improving our class scores and classes, a teacher-student interaction tool from the Office of Head Start. Program management and governance. The Office of Head Start was kind enough to drop a federal review on my first year as director. But I'm happy to report that we successfully completed the review in January with no negative findings. Focus areas moving forward this year is, as I mentioned, you know, we're serving income-eligible kids in pre-K that could be in Head Start. So we know there's an overlap in population, and we want to make sure that we're providing equitable services. The second piece is increasing the pay structure for our instructional assistants and our Head Start classrooms to match the educational requirements that come from the Office of Head Start. Community assessment. As I'm sure no one in this room is surprised, it has a lot to do with COVID. We started out this year increasing the number of full-day, or pre-K classrooms to serve more children, which was great. And then we ended this year with everyone being at home virtually. Thankfully, we received money from the Office of Head Start to do, offer more services, flexible funding. We were able to provide materials for at-home learning. Also, through the district, we were able to apply for a grant through the City of College Station that has kept many families in their housing and out of homelessness. As we look towards this year, we need to continue that focus on families that are struggling with emergencies or crises. By the end of the year, 40%, there was a 40% increase in the number of our families, Head Start families, that reported a crisis that might have looked like housing insecurity, food insecurity, clothing insecurity. So what do we do with that? And part of that is making sure that they have access to technology and reliable Wi-Fi. So with that negative note, I'm going to end on a bright spot. One of our overarching program goals for the next five years is to serve more children on their home campus. You can imagine it would be difficult to drop off a pre-K kid or a Head Start kid at one elementary campus and then, you know, take your second grader to another. And so that's been a real goal in serving our family and children well. And I'm happy to say that from 2018, when only 68% of our kids were on their home campus, as of this year, when we enrolled our students and they showed up the very first day on August 18th, 80% of our Head Start students are on their home campus. So really happy that we were able to make those shifts for our families. Any questions, comments?
That was very good. Questions, comments?
Oh, it's not, you want to go first?
I was just going to say, I remember you talking about that being a priority a couple of years ago, having on the home campus. And I had never thought about that before you mentioned it that night. And I'm so glad to see that you're able to move towards that, because I do feel that that's very important as well. I also think that some of your focus areas, again, I think I said this last time you gave us a report. I like that you set lofty goals for your organization. I mean, I do feel like some of those are quite lofty. But I like that you're continuously striving for that, for these kiddos. And one of them was about the how to continue involvement when it's difficult to have families in the schools right now. That one is one that has been on my mind a lot lately for all of our campuses. So, but I can imagine even more so with your age bracket, because to establish that, those relationships, and that feeling of comfortable in our buildings and with our teachers is so very important. So I'm glad that you guys are really focusing on that. That's one of your areas of focus?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just say, I'm also a fan of the self-assessment and really getting to look at what went well. And then, you know, what's not, where do we grow?
Yeah, where do we grow? Exactly. That's a great way to say it.
And always the one that stands out to me, I always look at is that, those kids that were not able to meet their needs. And I just kind of make maybe your input on, you know, what are possible options there? If we have any control over how we can try to meet the needs of those, you know, in this case, those 46 kids that we weren't able, sure, weren't able to meet.
Well, one of the ways you in this room participated in, which was when we changed our eligibility criteria. If you remember, before COVID, pre-COVID, we voted to make three-year-olds a priority now that we have full-day four-year-old pre-K. And so we've been able to serve more three-year-olds in Head Start, knowing that those four-year-olds can be served in pre-K. So right now, we have about five three-year-olds that are on the waiting list for Head Start, but that's way down from 46. So my hope is that we will continue that trend and not have as many kids that do not receive services.
Wonderful answer. I loved it.
Thank you.
One of the questions that comes to my mind is when you had the slide up there, I think there was 10 students that had hearing, and there was what?
46 with vision.
It's on the, and again, these are kiddos that maybe have the hard time just even communicating, not realizing that they have a vision problem or hearing problem. Are those within, I hate to say the word norms, but is it?
Like percentages?
Percentage-wise?
I honestly have no idea. One of the things are like our vision screener is a touchless, you know, the kids don't have to respond, because we know it's not developmentally appropriate for a lot of our kids to, you know, raise your hand if you hear something, or raise your hand if you see something, or can you read something on a screen? So our tools are very responsive to the age and the development of the child. But as far as, do we see higher numbers in pre-K?
The hearing is what really, the hearing is the one that really stood out to me.
Yeah. It's, I do not know how that varies from like a four-year-old exam to what we might be seeing in kindergarten.
A comment? I did have one more comment, and I, maybe it seems obvious, but I like to say those sometimes too, just to link this back to what we've talked, what I've talked about earlier, and particularly, you know, some of the numbers for the economically disadvantaged students in our district. To me, it starts right here. And, you know, and that's, if we can meet the needs of more of those kids, the better they'll, better opportunities they'll have as we, they progress through our grades. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Outstanding presentation.
I have a question. So in a couple of different places, you talked about focusing on mental health for, I guess, both families and for the kiddos.
Right.
Is, is there anything, you know, and I know you've got one organization that you've mentioned that you work with, but is there anything else, you know, community organizations that y'all can engage with? Or is there anything else from a board level that we can help with?
Yeah. Good question. So statistically, one in four women in some point in their lifetime experienced depression. Let's just start with the basics. If you're living in poverty, that's one in two. So 50% of the moms that we work with at some point will experience depression. Now you throw in COVID on top of that. And our families have access issues to a lot of things. They have access issues with transportation, food, housing. So imagine mental health. A lot of our parents are uninsured. They don't have funds for sliding scale, which is, the partnership with Oakwood Roots has been fantastic, because we were able to use quality improvement funds and just develop that monthly partnership with them. As far as expanding that beyond that collaborative, we work with NAMI. We work with anyone that will, you know, Texas A&amp;M, they have their own practitioners that will see our families on a sliding scale. We try to reduce the barriers like transportation and childcare by offering services at the Barbara Bush Parent Center, so that we can provide childcare or transportation to an appointment. So we really try to scavenge the community for resources. But if y'all have any that we haven't tapped, we would, we would love the access. Did that answer your question? Yeah.
All right. Anything else from a board level that we can do to help?
Let me think about that.
Okay.
I'll email you about that.
That's just, you know, it's a constant issue.
It is. It is. And we all, I think there's probably not a person in this room that hasn't been impacted by COVID and stress and changes. And it's just magnified when you have these additional barriers with funds and other things. So, good question. Thank you.
Again, outstanding presentation. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Mr. Schaefer, she would need approval of the self-assessment as presented.
So moved.
So a motion by Mr. Benn as second?
I'll second.
By Mr. Nugent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries as presented.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benn.
Can I just kind of rule?
If I'm not mistaken, that brings us to item I1. Is that correct?
Correct.
Item I1, consideration, consider approval of a new administrator contract as recommended by the superintendent of schools. That would be you, Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. And I know there's one or two people in this, in this room that would be particularly anxious if we skipped over this, this item. It is with great pleasure that I recommend to you for an administrative contract for the position of Assistant Principal at Southwood Valley, Ms. Dawn Newton. Dawn has been with the district since 2004, has served as a classroom teacher, an enrichment specialist, technology facilitator, and currently serves as an instructional coach. So we're very excited to have someone of her quality in the district and be able to recommend her to this position to assist Mr. Luna to continue the great work that's occurring at Southwood Valley. There's no doubt in visiting with Dawn that her passion and commitment to the children in this school district will serve her well in this new role, just as it has since she's been a part of things in 2000, beginning in 2004. So I would like to recommend her for administrative contract in the position of Assistant Principal at Southwood Valley.
I'm excited for Southwood Valley and for you, Ms. Newton.
So I'm assuming Ms. Nolan, that is a motion too?
Yes, I will make an official motion. I move to approve the new administrative contract as recommended by the superintendent of schools of Dawn Newton as Assistant Principal at Southwood Valley.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Wreck. There's a motion to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much, and welcome aboard. The excitement will begin tomorrow. We will move to item J1. I guess it wouldn't be a meeting if we didn't have Ms. Ross come up and speak to us. But item J1, consider approval of a technology purchase in the amount of $249,936 from Avanex, utilizing the educational purchasing inter-local cooperative at Region 6. This purchase will be made with Esser Care's funds. Mr. Martindale.
We have the opportunity to purchase an additional 500 laptops. With further details, Ms. Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Martindale, Mr. Schaefer, and members of the board. I tried to get everything on consent, but they just wouldn't let me. So yeah, one more time. We do have Esser funds. I described Esser and CARES Act funds to you a number of times. It's about $1.3 million that the school district received. We will get an offset in revenues, a decline in revenues for our 1920 physical year general fund. So that has happened, and we will be able to offset some of those expenses and move them into this CARES Act money to balance that out. But these funds can be spent all the way through September of 2022, 2023, I believe. So we don't expect them to last that long. But in looking at our numbers for 1920, we feel like we can use these funds in 2021, or some of them, to do some much-needed things and some, cover some additional costs we're experiencing in this current physical year. So we're not finished with 1920, but are overly confident that we can have more than $250,000 to carry forward into this physical year to help us out. There is a big need for technology devices right now. So with administrative approval, they got some quotes, and we were able to purchase 501 devices and 21 carts for those computers out of the Esser funds, if so approved. And so we will have a pretty quick delivery on these as well. We made sure that these are available. So if you so approve, we'll be able to, we'll carry these funds forward into 2021, 2021, and make this purchase.
Any further questions on that one? How soon will we be, if it's approved, how soon will we get?
Well, we're going to do the purchase order this week.
So I imagine there's a lot of people that are needing those.
Yeah, I was curious too, if there's been a backlog on any of the other systems we had ordered? And how, I mean, how quickly are these things?
We have been very selective in what the devices we picked with these funds, so that we could have some delivery, I believe, within the next four weeks. Which, you know, it's pretty quick.
Because I know, I mean, I know we're backfilling a lot of into the classrooms. But I believe that not only are the virtual students using more technology, but I think the kids in the classrooms, what I hear, are using more technology.
Absolutely. And they took some of those classroom units and moved them to the virtual setting. And so now we're trying to get some of the classroom units back up to the numbers that they need to be. So some of them may be replacing those that we took out of the classroom.
The 400 on the superintendent's update I showed you earlier, that's part of the Operation Connectivity. And that is due really any, this month. Is that correct, Mr. Hutchinson, the operation of connectivity from TEA?
Unfortunately, it's been pushed back to November.
Okay. News to me. Okay. Well, good. Then we absolutely need to purchase these 500 from Avanex.
Yeah, they were very, looked at the supply that they had available with Avanex and other vendors and tried to make sure we could get a quick inventory on these.
Good, good. I am, yeah, glad, glad we can get them in quicker. You want me to make a motion? You do? Yes. I make a motion that we approve the proposal to buy the additional laptops. Is that a good enough?
As presented.
As presented.
As presented. That's, thank you.
I'll second.
Let Mr. Nugent have that one. Motion by Ms. McAdams, a second by Mr. Nugent. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
And we will look for the revenue piece to this, maybe? Interest rate hikes, et cetera, next meeting. That will move us to item L-1, executive session, consideration and discussion related to the superintendent evaluation. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the personnel matters closed meetings, exception to the Texas Meetings Act as set forth in section 551-074 of the Texas Government Code. We will go into executive session and come out. It is 9:15, and we will call the meeting adjourned.